Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four regular business meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum with council member partially excused this evening. Couple of announcements, today is a special election today, so please be sure to put your ballot in the drop box before eight P. M. This evening. And with that, I'd like to invite up Stacy Ray, who is going to speak to us about our community oversight law enforcement program update. Stacy.
Hi, thank you so much. Good evening. For the record, I'm Stacy Ray, Director of Strategic Planning and Performance. In December of two thousand twenty-two, you as a council accepted a set of recommendations to reimagine public safety. One of the strategies in the recommendations included expanding the community's role in our city public safety system. So I'm here tonight to announce a significant milestone in the process to explore enhancing the community involvement in the Olympia Police Department. So approximately nine months ago, a subcommittee of our Social Justice and Equity Commission, an eleven-member community work group, and representatives from the Olympia Police Department, launched a process to learn about community involvement and oversight in policing and develop a set of draft recommendations. The draft recommendations they have developed build off of the city's current system of community involvement and oversight and are intended to enhance trust and legitimacy while expanding the community's role in ensuring accountability and transparency. So on Friday, February sixteenth, we'll launch an Engage Olympia survey to gather input on those draft recommendations. The survey will be open until March fourth. We've taken very intentional steps to help community members understand the recommendations as they can be new to a lot of people and there's a lot of elements to discover. The survey will include several different ways for community members to learn about what's included. So we'll have a visual graphic highlighting the proposed system, and we'll have a series of short videos and also a series of summaries. And then, of course, anyone's can download and read through the full detailed set of recommendations as well. Our intent is to really learn from community members if the recommendations and where they're at currently in the process reflect what Olympians value and what they would want to expect in a system of community involvement and oversight. So after the survey closes, as we've done with all of our work sessions, we'll share a summary on Engage Olympia, so community members can see their input reflected back with them, and that will also inform the next round of updates to the draft recommendations. So I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the work that's gone into this process thus far by our Social Justice and Equity Commission members, by our eleven-member community work group, and by members of the Olympia Police Department. It's truly been a collaborative process. They've really worked together to develop these recommendations with staff, and so I just want to acknowledge and lift that up. Lastly, this body of work is just one that's helping carry forward the recommendations from reimagining public safety, and if you want to learn more, or if community members want to learn more about what else is happening this year to carry out those recommendations, the Reimagining Public Safety website has been updated and highlights some things that have already been put in place this year and some of the significant work items that are coming forward in two thousand twenty-four. So that's it.
Thank you so much, Stacy, and I just want to thank you again for just the incredible amount of work that's gone into this and what you've done thus far up until this point, including having to pivot unexpectedly and just taking this and running with it. From what we see so far, it's it's an incredible amount of work that is very exciting to see, you know, coming to fruition, and you've kind of set the standard for yourself with reimagining, and now you're having to do it again with with civilian oversight. And so just thank you so much for your work. Any questions or comments from council? All right, thank you so much. All right, so that concludes our announcements portion for this evening, so I need a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. All right, so we don't have any special recognition this evening, so we will move on to public comment. Looks like we have one person signed up this evening in chambers. As a reminder, you do have two minutes for your comments. There is a clock to your left, my right. You have your green, yellow, and red stoplights to indicate your time left, and if you do not finish your comments, feel free to email them to us at the conclusion of your time here with us this evening. So with that, Mayor Protem.
All right, our one public commenter is ready, and I believe your name is Sarah Rawlings.
Sarah Rawlings.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you. So Sarah Rawlings, I'm really excited to make this sort of request from the City Council. I've been doing a lot of research on municipal mascots across the world, and in particular, I have fallen in love with Kumamon. Kumamon originally was a mascot for the Bullet Train line that had came into Kumamoto, but since two thousand eleven to two thousand nineteen, he made eight-point-one-four billion dollars in retail sales. Now, this is one of the most outliers, like the biggest extremes you can get, one of the most successful mascots in the world, so I'm not necessarily expecting that the city of Olympia might be able to duplicate that. However, I have done a lot of research into the marketing plans for Kumamon, Gritty, and a few other mascots around the world, and so I found that there's some commonalities in these marketing plans. Again, there's not enough time in the two minutes for me to talk about those sorts of things with you, but I would like to respectfully request that you create a subcommittee under whatever committee you deem fit to look into the economic viability of a mascot like that. Ultimately, what I would like to see is a secondary revenue stream for the city of Olympia. I want it to be able to make money. I want it to have a social media brand. I want it to make money off of Cameo. I want it to make, you know, surprise, you know, announcements at things. I want people to pay the city of Olympia for it to show up to their birthday parties for their children. So these are the kinds of things that I want to see. So not only is it about creating a secondary revenue stream for the city of Olympia, but it is about creating unity under something that is nonpolitical and pleasant, really pleasant. Politics nowadays is so uncomfortable and angry and sad, and I really just want to create something that Olympia can get under that we can all love together and make money off of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Sarah. Any questions or comments from council? Mayor Protem, followed by Councilmember Madrone, followed by Councilmember Cooper.
Oh, I just love your enthusiasm. Yeah, absolutely, and you've chosen to be excited on the stand. Um, yeah, so I I'm really intrigued. Um, you know, there is a part of me, I'll call it the boring part, that wonders, can we make money off of a mascot? What's the sort of ethics around that as a city government? Although, the part of me that's excited is outweighing the boring part, and I'm just so, so happy that you've taken the time to come here and to share your enthusiasm with us, and I think that you just started our meeting, right? And I'm really intrigued by this idea of, well, having it be a co-creation process with the community of, what does this really look like, right? And I think you're living proof that we have community members out there that are very knowledgeable about this and very passionate, so thanks for your time, and I'll definitely talk about it with colleagues. Thanks.
All right, Councilmember Madrone, followed by Councilmember Cooper.
Hi, Sarah. It's been a while. It's nice to see you.
Nice to see you too.
I just looked up Kumamon right here, and, you know, it's interesting, our sister city in Japan, Kato, you know, some of us got to visit there last year, they also have a mascot.
Kato Tanosuke.
All right. Excellent. You have done your research.
I definitely did my research. Kato Tanosuke is an excellent example of one that did not make its city money, however.
Oh, noted, all right, all right.
The thing is, is that when I contacted the city of Kato, they told me that the benefits weren't financial because they had a organization that they outsourced a lot of their tourism to. So that organization was what handled it. There's also another massive difference between Kumamon and Kato Tanosuke, and that has to do with the licensing, which is a very complicated topic, but I would love to talk to you about more when we have time.
Okay, excellent. Well, I'll check in with the Mayor Protem after after our meeting and see if there's energy here for this.
Great.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Madrone. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. I went to go grab off of my actual desk the Kato.
Tanosuke, yeah.
How do you say it? Denosuke?
Yes.
Denosuke, and I wish I had the picture to bring up of the former mayor and three of us, but I'll pass this down so my colleagues can be refreshed. Right away on the, online, I found a place to buy stickers for ninety-nine cents that are all different versions of that.
Yes.
I think it would be phenomenal, and the, the sense of camaraderie and the spirit that comes with the mascot, I think, is really a worthwhile conversation. One of my favorite places that we visited was the Panasonic Center in Kato where they disassemble appliances and reuse ninety-eight percent of the raw materials, and that factory had a mascot too. So like, they had the Kato mascot next to the Panasonic mascot, like in the, in the tourist room in the factory. It was part of the storytelling of the, of the organization, and I think it'd be a really cool endeavor. In fact, I think a handful of us have been talking about, where is the nexus between an updated flag, a mascot, and a theme song by some famous Olympia artists, right? That's a branding exercise I would like to go down. I, I think it's a really good evolution of our brand, and I go back and forth about whether it's a contest or not, but it's definitely a creative process with the community, probably with a really awesome marketing firm helping us do the, the full package.
I want to talk to you so much about marketing.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Councilmember Vanderpool, but before you go, Councilmember, I do want to express that public comment is typically not a two-way dialogue and.
I'm just gonna go.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but yes, clearly you can see there's some excitement amongst the council about it, but it's a general practice that it's not a back and forth. Yes. Councilmember Vanderpool.
I'm very excited about this concept, honestly. Having the whole marketing package of it would be great. I mean, I remember a few years ago, I think John Oliver had a thing on this, and that was like the first time I heard about this. And so, yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'd be very excited to see where we can go with that.
All right, well, thank you so much for coming this evening, Sarah. We, we ran into each other a few weeks ago at Trader Joe's, and you mentioned this to me, and I figured that there would be some interest amongst council on this topic, and so as you can see, that's validated, there clearly is some interest, so we will, we will talk about it amongst us and see what we can do as a result. So thank you so much for your time. So that concludes public comment for the evening. So with that, I need a motion to, oh, not yet, we have some pulls. So I am tracking that we are going to pull items four B and four D. Any other questions, comments, or pulls from the consent calendar? Okay, so with that, we'll pull item four B, which is approval of a resolution authorizing an agreement with Thurston Regional Planning Council, Thurston County, the cities of Lacey, Tenino, Tomwater, and Yelm for regional housing land capacity analysis. So I will turn it over to Councilmember Madrone, who requested that this be pulled for comment.
Yeah, and I mostly wanted it to be pulled for awareness, both all of us on council, but also folks in the community who are watching on, you know, what this is, what it means for Olympia and the region, why it's incredibly important for our planning processes, and also how it connects to the housing needs allocation. So we received a presentation a few months ago about, you know, the different, you know, income levels and different numbers of units that are needed, and this is very much tied to that. And last, I think it was the last meeting, I talked about a conversation at the Thurston Regional Planning Council about our goal in sustainable Thurston, where, you know, only five percent of growth and development we want happening in the unincorporated areas of the county, and that's not the trajectory that we're currently on. So I see Leonard is, yeah, standing by, ready to just speak about what this is and what it means for our, our planning in Olympia and in the region.
Yeah, thank you. Leonard Bauer, Community Planning and Development Director. Just real quickly, this is work that continues the housing, regional housing allocation work from last year. It was all directed by House Bill twelve-twenty in the two thousand twenty-three legislative session, which sets some new standards for the types of analysis we need to do in our housing chapter of our comprehensive plan. So the first step was that regional allocation. The state developed projections for housing needs across income levels for every county, and that process that we entered into last year with our partners in other jurisdictions was to divide that, that county-wide numbers and up into where, you know, which jurisdiction that each would be allocated, a certain number of housing units to be planned for over the next twenty years at each income level. Now, this next step in the analysis is to look at the land capacity that we have within each of our zoning districts and try to relate that to then income levels. So the likely types of housing that are allowed in our zoning, in each zoning district, different types of housing are allowed. What are the income levels right now based on census information in each of those areas, and then putting that together and projecting that forward? What does that mean in terms of how well we are situated to provide for the development of housing that could meet each income level? And so that's what this analysis is doing for each of the jurisdictions that we're partnering with, and that's important that we're doing that regionally, and it's unusual. I don't know of any other county yet who's done it that way, but we think it's very important at the staff level because that allows us then to also potentially revisit those allocations to the different jurisdictions depending on the outcome of this. If different, if certain jurisdictions don't appear to have the right capacity for certain income levels, we may need to revisit and, and adjust. And so that's built into this scope of work and would be brought back to you at the end of that. So that's a quick summary, but if you have other questions, I'm glad to take those.
Thank you, Leonard. Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Thank you for that description letter. I'm just wondering, when you are looking at that, do you look for more services and more walkability and transit access at lower incomes than you would at higher incomes? Like access to services without a car?
Not, not as part of this analysis, but certainly within the comp plan overall, as you know, that's, that's some of our major goals of our comprehensive plan, so we'll be looking, once we have this analysis, where are those needs? And how does that all fit together within the comp plan as a whole? So are there things we need to do in our transportation chapter or other chapters that will mesh better with what we find in this analysis?
Because I think, you know, the comments that Councilwoman Madrone made last week about the South County cities being surprised by the increase compared to what was in sustainable Thurston, and then you talking about it made me think like, just because it's cheaper to buy a piece of land in Tenino doesn't mean it's cheaper to live because you have to drive here for work and services and sometimes, sometimes the groceries that they don't have at the, at the market there, and so wanted to make sure that we're thinking about a holistic income and cost comparison and not just the land value to, to income ratio.
And that, that, there's a tool and that we may be able to use in our comprehensive planning process. It's provided by, and I'm trying to remember the name of the website off the top of my head, but there's, there is a transportation plus land use kind of calculus that can be done, and there's a tool to do that. So that's something that we may be able to use as we look at our comprehensive plan to really, to really see that. And I don't know if the other jurisdictions would use that specific tool, and it's not built into this analysis, but I can carry that forward as a suggestion.
Okay, yeah, because I just don't think it's all apples to apples when you just look at land value. Thank you.
Councilmember Gilman, followed by Councilmember Vanderpool.
Thank you. First, as to Councilmember Cooper's comment, the Housing Action Plan actually has a nice description of each of those other needs that are sort of interdependent along with the, the actual rate of rent of how do you, how do you make somebody successful in their housing? So we, we have descriptions of that in our tools. What I wanted to comment on was the, the document that we started with, that presentation a couple months ago, I was challenged that it broke all of the affordable housing into twenty percent increments, and then it lumped together everybody above a hundred and twenty percent, and a couple of folks made comments like, look, we need a lot of more expensive housing. And so it's, that's kind of true, but it's also if you, if you aggregate, if you add together all those affordable housing categories, that's seventy-five percent of the projected need. That it's, it's, we'll need a hundred and thirty thousand of the hundred and twenty percent and below, and we'll need forty-one thousand greater than a hundred and twenty-one, a hundred and twenty percent. So I think that's the reason for the work that our housing team is taking on, the many different kinds of tools, incentives, creative ways to finance things, because one of the findings of the, the Housing Action Plan was that the private development committees community told us that we would have to have some participation for just about all the housing from workforce housing down to permanent supportive housing, that they were unlikely to just build it on the, on the private market. So I just, I just wanted to underscore that my, my framing isn't that we need forty-one thousand units of more expensive housing by two thousand forty-five, so we'd better give away some more free permits or something, but that, but that that's about a quarter of the total need, and three-quarters of the need is the kind of need for long-term, stable, affordable housing that at this point in history requires some sort of public intervention to get built.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilman. Councilmember Vanderpool.
My question's rather short. So this report is on land capacity and incomes, correct? So when you're doing your analysis on incomes, I know that I've done studies with the Americans, the American study through the census before, and I notice it usually studies end up doing joint incomes or family incomes. I'm wondering if it'd be possible to also look at it based on individual incomes rather, because that would be closer to working-class incomes rather than joint incomes, because usually it's about half of it or less.
I appreciate the, the comment. I'll have to take that forward to Thurston Regional Planning to see what's available. I know we typically work on, on household income, so, and, and that, of course, there's different sizes of households, but whether we have enough data on individual incomes, I'll carry that forward and we can take a look.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, additional questions, comments? All right. Thank you so much, Leonard. All right, so we will move on to four D, which is approval of a resolution authorizing an agreement between Thurston County, the city of Lacey, the city of Olympia, and city of Tomwater to support implementation of the two thousand twenty-four Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative Regional Initiatives. And so to share a few highlights from that, I'm going to invite up Dr. Pamela Braff, who is our Director of Climate Programs. Welcome, Pamela.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm shorter than everyone else. For the record, Pamela Braff, Director of Climate Programs. I'm really excited that we're here tonight with our regional, proposed regional initiatives for two thousand twenty-four for the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative. This represents the first real regional implementation of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan and the work that we've been doing with, with our partners. And so if you recall, we, we started, developed a new process for how we work together on implementation of the plan. That was approved last year, and so, so now we're getting into that, and one of the key central pieces of that is an annual regional initiative, or in this case, two regional initiatives, that the jurisdictions all work on together, and they're meant to be focused around the types of actions that are most benefited from regional coordination. We know some of the actions in our, in our climate plan, they can be implemented easily by individual jurisdictions. Others really need to be coordinated to be as effective as possible. And so the two regional initiatives that we're bringing forward this year, these initiatives were discussed at our annual retreat last year. They were approved by the Executive Committee of the Collaborative, and what they are, there's two. There's this Residential Energy Efficiency and Electrification Campaign, which we call the EEE Campaign or E3 Campaign, because that's a lot of words. And then the second one is a Home Energy Score Disclosure Policy. And so what we'll be doing next year is working to develop both of these items in a regional way so that they can be implemented hopefully in two thousand twenty-five. So the goal for the Energy Efficiency and Electrification Campaign is really to build off of the work that we're already doing here in Olympia with Energize Olympia with the Heat Pump Group Purchase Campaign, and to develop something that's region-wide, that encompasses a broader suite of services, hopefully also energy audits and weatherization improvements at the same time. So we'll be working to develop that. That campaign will also conclude two different elements. One is a, a web-based tool for folks to search for and find incentives and contractors in their area. That's actually going to launch this year and should be available soon. And then the other one is an advisory service to help folks go through the process of figuring out, how do I find an installer? How do I compare quotes? That type of thing, to really provide that, that targeted support. So those first two items would launch this year, and then, and then next year, hopefully we would be able to implement our regional electrification campaign. The second item is to develop a, a regional model ordinance for a home energy score disclosure. And so this is related to giving information to folks when they're looking for a home or even living in their home about the energy performance of their home, how it compares to other homes, and also what's really important is recommendations of cost-effective improvements that will result in energy savings. So those, that's the second item that we'll be working as a region to develop next year, this year.
Thank you so much, Dr. Braff. Any questions or comments for Dr. Braff? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much. All right, so with that, I need a motion to approve this evening's consent calendar.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of approving the consent calendar signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent calendar is adopted. So that takes us to our single business item this evening, item six A, which is approval of the two thousand twenty-four Plinth Project Sculptures for Exhibition. And here to present this evening is Stephanie Johnson, our Arts Commission Staff Liaison, as well as Kathy Dorgan, the Chair of Olympia's Arts Commission. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Payne, and members of council. For the record, I'm Stephanie Johnson, Arts Program and Planning Supervisor with Parks Arts and Recreation with Kathy Dorgan, Arts Commission Chair. And tonight, we're pleased to present to you the recommendations for the two thousand twenty-four Percival Plinth Project. This is an exhibition of loaned sculpture along Percival Landing for up to a year with a public vote to determine which sculpture will be purchased to add to the city's permanent collection. If approved, the artist, artist will receive one thousand dollars for the loan of each sculpture and one work selected by public vote during the month of July for a purchase prize of up to ten thousand dollars. Each year, the winning sculpture moves to the front of City Hall for an additional year and then into permanent exhibition somewhere in the community. The jury met on Thursday, February first, to review twenty-eight submitted sculptures. The jury was comprised of illustrator Ayesha Elbeulie, sculpture, sculptor, and two thousand twenty-two Percival Plinth Award recipient Pat McVeigh, and Arts Commissioner Tracy Schreiber. All submitted sculptures were reviewed by city staff for a visual sculptural assessment, and jurors reviewed the work based on several criteria, including the quality of work and attention to craft, safety requirements, and balance and diversity of materials and style among selected sculptures. Seventeen sculptures were reviewed by the Arts Commission on February eighth and recommended to City Council for consideration. Here to share the recommendation is Arts Commission Chair Kathy Dorgan, who will read excerpts from the artist's statements to provide a sense of context around each sculpture.
Good evening. The first is Stone Soup. The artist notes, "I love when people cooperate and are able to accomplish something impossible to do by yourself. An example is this summer, we helped Tenasket School District build a greenhouse. The day we put the plastic cover on, we had twenty-two people. All were needed." The story of Stone Soup has everyone contributing a little something that resulted in a delicious soup for all. Circular memory. The artist notes, "In my work, I use the body as a site to explore the lived experiences of racism, ancestral, human and non-human connection, and as a mixed-race Black person, the complicated blend of histories held within my body. My work balances the individual and the collective. Each piece contains a unique individual, but also references to a larger collective of people and/or the natural world." Circular memory is about the Circular Memory is about the ways that our lineage is connected to us through DNA, which is represented by the hair, as well as how memory and story are repeated and held within our bodies." Leaning Figure. The artist continues, "My work shows reverence for real bodies while also incorporating elements that are physical manifestations of the intangible. The humans I make are often interconnected with elements of the natural world, many of whom are native to the Pacific Northwest, where my family has lived for four generations. Trees, roots, animals, water, stars, and salt are common threads throughout my work. I love paying attention to and learning from our non-human relatives and incorporating their teachings." Axel the Pelican. The artist notes, "I have spent nearly twenty years taking junk and reinventing it into something that is functional or beautiful instead of filling up our landfills. I have been narrowing my focus on discarded stainless flatware and finding new life for them. Realism plays a huge part in the total creation. I don't want you to know this flatware until you look closely. I've been working on creating creatures that tend to fly or swim. The forks and spoons can be transformed into feathers and scales. Finding new configurations or new norms for these utensils is always the challenge." Parthia. The artist notes, "The Puget Sound tugboat Parthia sank in the Hood Canal and has been razed, currently undergoing restoration at Swan Town Marina. This rendering of her under steam was begun as part of the twenty twenty-three Harbor Days celebration." Cloud Nine. The artist notes, "To some, art and engineering may seem like a true dichotomy, but not to me. I've pursued and intermingled both with a passion my whole life. True to being an engineer, I often will design a sculpt- sculpture project in three-D with CAD. However, I find I often have my best results when I work from a sketchbook. The process of learning to fabricate, developing a sculpture or vocabulary, and mastering my materials has been a never-ender, never-ending challenge that keeps me motivated in moving forward. Cloud Nine is a stream of consciousness. The sculpture portrays blissfulness as represented by projecting oneself onto the highest of clouds, Cloud Nine. When you're there, nothing else matters." Clara. The artist notes, "We, Ukiiud, the name of our studio, work primarily in the field of mixed media sculpture and public art installation. Fueled by a strong desire to create moments of childlike wonder in everyday life, our single and multi-piece installations use the visual language of childhood to fully engage both young people and adults. A sense of immediacy and accessibility is at the heart of our public art mission. Our sculptures provide instantaneous and uplifting pops of joy by means of their playful characterization, emotional connection, humor, and whimsy. Clara will be customized for the Percival Plinth Project using the exact fiberglass mold as for the piece shown here, but with the inlaid resin cylinders evocative of Washington State's official colors of blue and green. She is based on Clara Pottle, a pioneer of women's suffrage and the wife of Olympia founder Edmund Sylvester. A single flower, as seen, will be cast in the colors of the suffragists' movement and attached to Clara's breast." Shachi Hoko. The artist notes, "Japanese-American culture has a specific word for someone who is four generations removed from their homeland, a yunsei. To maintain connection to that heritage becomes a Herculean feat in the face of cultural assimilation. Languages are lost, rituals forgotten, and forbears fade with time. Shachi Hoko represents my means of breathing life back into that connection to my Japanese ancestry. My sculptures are meant to breathe resilience into those dormant connections between me and my past, to show people that even when we are uprooted from the legacies we inherit, we always have the opportunity to rebuild them." Wild Salmon of the Salish Sea. The artist notes, "This sculpture celebrates our native wild salmon. It is welded together and constructed out of recycled steel, specifically decommissioned welding cylinders and fire extinguishers. The thick materials and method of welding the salmon to the weeds creates a stout structure where the salmon appear to float at eye level." Dragonfly. The artist notes, "Kyle Ocean's sculptural work utilizes the graphic language of his printmaking and drawing, translating that language into equally expressive three-dimensional form in other material and on a greatly larger scale. All of my designs are intended to grab your attention from afar and draw the viewer in to take a closer look at the surface details that come through as part of the patina process. The piece includes topographical lines on the surface that emulate the terrain of the mountains within the Olympic range." Break the Chains. The artist notes, "The sculpture I'm submitting is entitled Break the Chains. This sculpture is the third from my Breaking Chains series. I feel that this theme is universally relatable and depicts our common struggles and victories over oppression and limitations. It is made from reclaimed welded steel. Each of the chains has a broken link, showing that the figure is actually in the moment of becoming free from their bonds." The Dungy. The artist notes, "Pirate Metal Works is a small business based in Bellingham, creating metal sculptures inspired by a seafaring lifestyle. After many years as a commercial fisher and industrial welder, lead artist Jennifer Strassel is channeling her metalworking skills into fine art with the help of her scallywag crew. Our proposed sculpture is a larger-than-life dungeonous crab fabricated from cold rolled steel. Affectionately called dungies, these creatures are unique to the West Coast and fulfill important needs in our ecosystem. This sculpture invites curiosity, playful engagement, and awareness of local marine creatures." Amber. The artist notes, "This realistic bronze spider appears from a steel web. A red crystal sphere rests in the pot on her back, representing the legendary fire she brought to the mainland in the Cherokee traditional stories. The sculpture is designed to allow light through the red crystal orb from multiple angles and the back as in a, as in a set gem, adding interest and pop to the sculpture from all viewing angles. Often called Grandmother Spider, she is a reminder of the importance of the small, to recognize and respect everyone in our community." Sacred Soil. The artist notes, "Peeking around this gem-like form is the face of a humble water beetle, inviting the visitor to explore the angles and facets of his body and the shape he perches on. The mud he brings is represented as a gem-like faceted form, reflecting the sacred preciousness of soil as the substrate of life. In the Cherokee tradition, a water beetle is credited with creating all the dry land by bringing up mud from the bottom of the ocean. This is a parable demonstrating the importance of everyone in a community, as this small mud-colored beetle was the only creature who could accomplish this monumental task after many others failed." Water Watcher. The artist notes, "Healthy human adult is sixty percent water, an infant eighty-five percent. Hopefully, Water Watcher reminds us of the need of everyone and of the world around us to have safe water and for us to be vigilant to keep our waters clean." Melting Iceberg Ancient Water. The artist notes, "My sculpture is a static representation of time, a rather broad and spongy topic that entails, engulfs, and defines everything. I want to express aspects of time in a visual format that might suggest some of its awe and wonder. This takes many forms, but usually involves implied motion. It could be a figure in motion, a progression, or a becoming. That is one thing becoming something else. The sculptures change, express time, with the light of the day and viewer position." Persist. The artist notes, "Persist is a column built from scraps on the studio floor. Three curves left overcuts from other pieces set next to each other formed the basis of the form. The first curves in the piece determined each step of the process, forcing the next curve into place. Persist was not an easy piece. The parts did not always go together. There were challenges to get material to move from one place or angle to another. All along the way, something in the form made me want to continue. The name came from that struggle of construction, yet also can be seen in the final result. A column, twisted and with imperfection, pushes up to stand tall in the face of adversity. To persist is to keep trying, no matter what." The question before you is to approve the Arts Commission's sculpture recommendation for the twenty twenty-four Percival Plinth Project.
Wow, thank you both. Uh, just an incredible, incredible body of work that we have here. Um, so I just want to see if there are any questions from council. Councilmember Gilman.
Kathy, before we make the motion, could you tell us when to expect these beautiful sculptures to show up along Percival Landing?
July.
In July.
I knew it was summer, yes.
Yeah, this is a sneak preview, and we've got several months, and then we'll, it's, and I, I'm struck by how many local artists we have this time. I mean, it's, it's always a great Northwest representation. We have quite a few local people in this, this crop.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm thrilled.
Mayor Protem, win.
What a lovely art break. That's really what that was. I mean, I think it was so soothing listening to you, Kathy. Uh-huh, and you stayed with it, too. Those first few words sounded the same throughout. Yeah, um, yeah, I just really enjoyed this. Uh, I noticed some, uh, uh, some familiar designs, so, uh, uh, circular memory, uh, is very reminiscent of women with graves on her back, uh, as is Axel the Pelican eating the fish. Uh, looks very similar to underwater disagreement.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so it is nice to also see, uh, so many artists returning and sharing, uh, choosing to share their skills and talents with us, and it's, it's really quite a feat, I think, of, of the Arts Commission to be able to source every year, uh, this many, uh, different artists and, and the talent and, uh, you know, so, so different. Um, so I'm really impressed by that. I am curious, uh, as to, um, how we might be sharing the stories behind the art. Um, yeah, if I, uh, how I receive them tonight would be so different than if I was just walking along and seeing them.
Uh, there's a website attached to the Percival Plinth Project, which has a map, and it also has an image of each of the pieces, and I plan to, because I, I think it wa- you just caught on to why we had Kathy do this big job, because the context really adds so much. So the statements in full, and this was excerpted, so the statements in full will be put on the website.
Do you think there is, uh, maybe a future where we might add, uh, like a QR code or something, uh, something simple and quick for folks to get to that website?
We have experimented wi- with it in the past, and we can certainly do it again. Yeah, we haven't made the plaques yet, so sure, I'll write that down. Thank you.
Councilmember Madron.
I just wanna put a plus one on the, the QR code thing, as, as somebody who was previously really resistant to Q- QR codes, and now I'm like, oh, pretty QR code, I can learn more. I, I actually think it's a really, really useful way for people to be able to access information while they're, they're looking at something. And also, thank you both for, for bringing this far. This is really cool. I'm excited.
All right. Um, well, just thank you so much. I very much look forward to seeing each of these pieces in person in July. Um, so, uh, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Gilman to make the motion.
I move to approve the Arts Commission-recommended sculptures for the twenty twenty-four Percival Plinth Project Exhibition.
Second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Congratulations. All right, so with that, that concludes our regular business items for the evening. Uh, so we will move on to council reports, and, and I will start, uh, with my mayor's report. So I, I just wanted to share, uh, just one upcoming of, uh, thing that I have, which is, uh, the upcoming Black History Month event, uh, that is taking place this Thursday, uh, February fifteenth, from five-thirty to eight-thirty PM at the Mine Art Center for the Arts at SPPCC. So would love to see you there. I'll be making opening remarks, uh, to kick off the event. Um, I also wanted to share that I've been invited to receive our county's, uh, Black History Month, uh, proclamation, uh, next week, which is an incredible honor to be asked, uh, and so I'm happy to go and represent the city and, and our region, um, to receive the proclamation. So with that, I will start to my left with Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. No reports, but I do wanna just point out, uh, the email that I sent this week about the Los Angeles Ca- um, City of Los Angeles Housing Executive Order. I think it's really fascinating, and just in a quick summary, it's two things. One, they used the emergency declaration for the housing emergency to put in place a sixty-day or less approval window for all affordable housing. They're seeing for-profit housing, multifamily housing developments pulled from the pipeline and switched to affordable and put back in, because that sixty-day timeline saves them enough money to, to make the project feasible for affordability. The second piece is they give them the menu of density bonuses that the state has already worked out. So in my mind, if we could get to some sort of executive order around timeline, granted we're not a, a strong mayor city, but we have a, we have the menu already, right? And so how could we look at what LA did at the Olympia scale? I'm just thinking out loud, this is not a referral, but it would be really cool if people with executive, or with emergency powers in their hands, um, maybe came up with an idea like that.
Thanks, Councilmember Cooper. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Cooper? Okay, Mayor Protem, win.
Yeah, just a couple of short ones. Um, uh, this, uh, this past year, we, uh, did do a Lunar New Year proclamation for, uh, uh, February tenth, which was, uh, the beginning of the Lunar New Year, um, for many different Asian cultures, um, and, uh, the beginning of the Year of the Dragon for twenty twenty-four. Um, and, uh, I don't know, I guess this is just sort of, uh, uh, a, a little bit of reflection, but, um, I remember when I first started on council and how much I wanted to make sure there was some sort of thing throughout the year that had some Asian representation in it, and it was a big deal to me to have the Lunar New Year. Um, and this year, time got away, and truthfully, I don't always wanna be the one doing it every year. Um, but I, I've also just felt really heartened that, uh, I feel like, um, our sort of community and society has grown, um, in a lot of different ways, and, um, and one of those ways is by, uh, observing, um, or I, I guess really acknowledging observances, uh, that, uh, mean a lot to different types of people. Um, I've seen, uh, more Lunar New Year displays, uh, more, uh, offerings of, of different decorations and being able to buy different things, just, uh, kind of mainstream, and it's just felt really encouraging. And, um, just bringing it back to the city a little bit, is, um, I also, uh, you know, it was, uh, took off a, a little bit of stress thinking like, oh my goodness, how, how could you not, you know, plan in advance and put together a proclamation, and just thinking about how lovely it is that this year will be our now second annual in May, um, uh, Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Celebration citywide. Um, so for what it's worth, uh, I guess the short of it is that I wanna say Happy Lunar New Year. Um, and it is, for those that don't know, it's still the new year. We take it very seriously. It lasts many days. Um, uh, and, uh, I hope that, uh, And I hope that this year is one of... I am Chinese and Vietnamese myself, and other cultures celebrate it as well, but true to my traditions, we always wish you great prosperity. And I think our public commenter knows something about that. So prosperity, lots of luck, and lots of successes. And hopefully, this year, we can strive to emulate those great qualities of the dragon, which is that, yes, the underbelly is fiery, and it does need to watch itself and its passions, much like a lot of us that have strong beliefs and great passions for our city, but also that it is honorable as well and bold, right? And so also things that I see reflected in our city government and within our community. And then next, just want to share with everyone, I feel really privileged to be able to share that with really the creative juices behind staff in arts and then also in public works, there is this sort of overlook area, a bridge. It's not really a bridge. It's more like a lookout at the water over at West Bay Park. If you're looking at the park at the entrance, it's clear to the left side. There's this little overlook, and some hooligans had destroyed a bit of the fencing around it that was a railing of the overlook. So anyways, it needed to be repaired, and what a great opportunity, I think, staff found to create something interactive and something strong, which is an opportunity for love locks. So if people don't know what love locks are, you'll see them in a lot of big cities. Paris would be the biggest example, where it's typically a fence over a bridge, and people will, also hooligans, will illegally lock in their, lock in their love, we call it, with padlocks and just different types of locks. So this one, we have here, a legal one, in the city of Olympia, and our first one. So I got to go down there with my sweetheart and sort of demonstrate for our city's social media, locking in our love. But I just invite you all to come and check it out. And it is for, it is for love. It is for love romantically, familial, friendship. It is for maybe a promise that you've made yourself that you would love to keep. And yeah, so I'd like to see some community interaction with it. Maybe you can demonstrate that and be the first to do so. If you have a lock before you, then please use it. Please inscribe with, I guess, a permanent marker or something, something that's important to you. Maybe it's your family's name, maybe it's your initials, whatever you want to put. And come on down to West Bay Park and lock in the love. And if you don't have one in front of you, it's probably because I underestimated how many staff members would be here tonight. So please reach out to me, and I'd be happy to run back down to the good folks at Always Safe in Lock. So anyways, for what it's worth, I hope everyone has a happy Valentine's Day tomorrow, too. Thanks.
Thanks so much, Mayor Pro Tem. Yes, and on that note, Happy Lunar New Year to our community. And also, I want to, just for a moment, recognize what you've said about being the one responsible to bring forward proclamations. I do believe we keep a list, a running list of all of the proclamations we've done in the past, correct? So we'll just need to make sure that we're checking in on those to make sure that we ping the council on when something has come up, so that we can consider bringing it forward again. Any questions or comments for the Mayor Pro Tem? All right, seeing that, Councilmember Gilman.
Actually, I do have a question. In this tradition of locks, I know there's the whole Juliette's Bridge, whatever, right? What do you do with the key?
That's such a great question. Do not... There is a sign that expressly says to please not throw any objects in the water, and there is a much cuter thing that you can do with it. You could always throw it away. The idea is that you've locked in your love, and so hopefully, it's not going anywhere. Although the city does reserve the right to remove the locks for maintenance, as needed, so I think it's important to say. But yeah, if you're doing it with someone, then you can just hold on to the keys to each other's heart, I suppose.
Thank you very much. That's sweet, and I see there's a pair of keys that comes with the locks. Great. Two short reports. And I'm being told that the back of the lock already says, "Come lock..." "Come lock in your love." All right. Take the assignment seriously. Yes. I attended my first TCOM 911 Administrative Board meeting last week, and was lucky enough that it was the week when they do an annual report and review. So I'm just going to give you a couple of highlights of why our police and firefighters are so busy. It's because these people call them all the time and tell them to go places. So three hundred and ninety-five thousand calls to and from the TCOM dispatch center last year was eighty percent law enforcement and twenty percent fire, or EMS and fire. And that resulted in over two hundred thousand dispatches. And if you think there's three hundred and sixty-five days in a year, that's a lot of dispatches. So I was pretty amazed at that. And the other little bit of interesting news for me was that this past year has been TCOM's first year working hard at social media. And so I would urge you, if you haven't seen their posts, they're starting to get more and more impressions, page views, interactions. And it's... So it was just, it was a cool thing. They're working hard on their communication. The other thing, that same evening, half an hour apart, I attended the Inter-City Transit Authority meeting, and the first, another operator class, the first one of 2024 graduated with nineteen new drivers hitting the streets right now. So we continue to get up to the service level that we were at pre-pandemic. And the one other thing that I would say that's of note is Inter-City Transit has been the champion at a variety of regional, state, and national rodeos. They call them ROAD rodeo, bus driver and mechanic competitions. And our team is helping to organize an international rodeo with US and Canadian drivers that's going to be held the end of April in Portland. So we're excited about that. And if you want to ride with Clark to go down and watch the bus drivers compete on a random Sunday at the end of April, that's where I'll be headed. So those are the two things I wanted to report on briefly. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Gilman? So before I forget, while we're on a list of observances, we have Valentine's Day, and we have Lunar New Year, and I was told earlier today that it is also the birthday of our Chief of Police, Rich Allen, so happy birthday, Chief. Back to work. Right on. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. I just want to point out that we have champion solid waste drivers right here in our own city, so it might be kind of cool to set up a little competition between the two teams, just for fun. The trucks aren't that different.
We can ask maybe our Assistant City Manager, or we have our Public Works Director here. Do we have a vehicle that's close to its end of life if we were to do a demolition derby?
That would be fun.
Councilmember Vanderpool.
Well, I don't have this exciting, as fun thing to say right now. On Thursday, the Capital Triangle Subarea Plan dropped. I had it read by Saturday, because I'm a nerd, and I thought, I was so excited for it. Anyway, there's a couple, there's a lot to take away from that. And, you know, some of the things that really stick out to me is, you know, kind of some of our... To spur on the growth in that area, we'll need to change some of our zoning, some of our, what I call arbitrary codes, you know, that prevent development, you know, setbacks, height restrictions, parking restrictions for types beyond residential. These things we're going to eventually have to come around to. But also I noticed is there's a lot of like strengthening the roads in the area to make it more multimodal. And that's going to require us going into the Engineering Design Standards, which is a very nerdy document that you can really get into, you know. Every time a development happens, that's the thing that the developer pays for, from the center of the street to the building. And so that's the sidewalks, that's the bicycle lanes, that's everything. So when we get into that, that's going to be something that I see in there. But one thing that stuck out to me, deep into the documents, deep into the environmental impact statement, is that it said that there's a potential for around thirty units per acre. That is really high for Olympia. It's of high density. Will we get there? Probably not.
You want to answer for me?
Oh, you were laughing about something.
You have to watch the video.
But yeah, the Triangle Subarea Plan is something that is pretty big, and we're all going to have to get into soon. I went into the Council of Neighborhood Associations yesterday, and, you know, they also had interest in the Triangle. They have interested in our parks plan. They, you know, they're trying apparently to focus on including more apartments in their membership, which is, I think, a good change. You know, there's definitely a need for that. More renters' output. They're, you know, sidewalks came up, which is the big thing. You know, they're pushing their Survey 123 app alongside ours, so there's going to be a little bit of that going on that we're going to have to work with in the future, because they'll be reporting stuff, and we'll be doing our sidewalk review, so. So that's everything major. Tomorrow, I am excited to say that it'll be my first Regional Transportation Policy Board meeting at 7:30 a.m. Excited about that. Luckily, I'm up by that time, so. Yeah, those are kind of the big things.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Vanderpool? Councilmember Madron.
What I was chuckling about was you're sitting here talking about reading this EIS for the Capitol Mall Triangle after its dis-release, and I just did one of these. You're on the right committee with us, on the Land Use Committee, where we'll be visiting, looking at the subarea plan, the planned action ordinance later in the year. So look forward to having those conversations with you. I do have a question around the Sidewalk 123 app. This is something that the CNA is using to report deficient sidewalks. Is that correct?
Yeah, they're working with Mike Ruth. This is a, Survey 123 is an app that SRE uses through GIS. You can, they can go out and, you can set, anyone can set up the app. It's really easy to do. But you just go out and you, it uses your phone GPS, you fill out a bunch of questions, it take a photo, and it marks the category on the data.
Okay, so it's like a collector app, kind of a thing?
Yeah, yeah, and it'll create a publishable map for them.
Okay, but are they only looking at areas where there are existing neighborhood associations? Is that because it's within the realm of the CNA?
I think they're handing it out to all of them, but they're not limiting the scale of it. But you, over time, if we have access to the map, because I think it's public, because I think licensing is through Evergreen, when we look at that, we'll be able to tell where we're not, they're not looking, because there won't be any markings on the map in those places.
I think you're picking up what I'm putting down, so thanks.
Thanks, yeah. And just for some additional context for those who might be listening, and the CNA is essentially, they're doing their own sort of sidewalk assessment as the city will be conducting ours this year. And so, you know, I'm sure that that will be very helpful in regards to our discussions when we talk about prioritization of projects around the city. So I'm more than positive they'll be interested in participating in that discussion, using their own information. Yes, and for those who are also listening, the CNA is the Council of Neighborhood Associations. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Vanderpool? Councilmember Madron.
Just one thing to report. Mayor Pro Tem Nguyen recently spoke about a community land trust event that took place, and that happened last Thursday. I had the honor of being able to wear two hats as I gave opening comments and participated in a panel on this, because I spoke around, you know, how housing land trusts can play a role in the affordable housing challenges that we're having, particularly around homeownership as a city. And then my day job, I work for American Farmland Trust, and, you know, got to speak around the role that community land trusts can play in farmland preservation. It was a packed house at the Black Box. I think even the organizers were surprised. Almost a hundred people showed up to the event. We watched a couple of films around the history of both community land trusts for farms and for housing, and had a really great panel and discussion with the audience afterwards. But one thing that makes a land trust a community land trust is that you're not just looking at protecting land, but you're also looking at the social aspect, like how humans are interacting with that land. And so there's land trusts that protect places for environmental reasons, and that's also really important work. But a community land trust looks at, you know, how do humans have access to the land? How is the land being worked in ways that are, you know, beneficial? So it was really great, and it was really heartwarming. We had Mayor Pro Tem Nguyen and Councilmember Vanderpool were there as well, and just a really, really robust dialogue with the community on how we can all support the local Thurston Housing Land Trust and our Community Farmland Trust that operates in the South Sound area to protect really, really important places for people to be and to work. That's my report.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments for Councilmember Madron? Councilmember Vanderpool.
Side note, the Triangle does mention the need for these for land trusts and for strategically buying land. So I look forward to that fun fact in there.
All right, City Manager Bernie.
Thank you, Mayor Payne. Just one item, just a reminder for the community, there is no council meeting next week on the twentieth. The next council meeting is on February twenty-seventh. It is a study session. Here's your annual conversation with the hearing examiner, and then the next council business meeting for the community is will be March fifth.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions or comments for the city manager?
Okay, so at this time, we will recess for five minutes, followed by a reconvening for an executive session in Room 423 for up to ninety minutes to discuss a real estate matter. No decisions will be made. So followed by the executive session, we will be adjourned for the evening. It is now 7:08.